All right, good evening. I'd like to call the November 10, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council at order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be presiding over the meeting tonight. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Smiley for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Remembering that our city attorney is also a minister, I've asked if he would deliver the invocation tonight. Thank you, sir.
Reverend McGirt.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Let us pray. Eternal God, this is the day that the Lord has made, and we rejoice and are glad in it. We ask your blessing on the city, the mayor and the council members, the absent council members, and all of the members of the public gathered in this chamber, which have gathered to do the public's business. Zoom in and touch our hearts, minds, and spirits for your glory. For Christ's sake and his name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover, and Mayor Protem Glover has let us know that she will not be attending this evening. Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson, he has let us know that he will not be attending this evening as well. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Yes, Mayor, I have one change and then I'll turn it over to the city attorney for one addition. I would ask that the council request at the council table or continue the following two items. Item number nine, which is an ordinance requested by Man Farms LLC to rezone .48 acres located along the current terminus of Oak Down Way, and also to continue the item, an ordinance requested by Forelife Properties LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 90.378 acres. And we would continue those until December the 8th.
So items nine and 10.
Items nine and 10, yes. Other than that, and then the attorney has an addition as well.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mayor and council acts that the following item be added to the agenda. It's entitled "City's Consent of Assignment for TAF City Development Agreement" and Consent of Replacement Property Assignment, and that item is at each one of your desks.
All right. Item 14.
Okay. Move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second. All right, motions been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. We'll move on to special recognitions. Unless we have any 10-year-old softball players hiding underneath the seats, I think we will probably move on without one. All right, we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be a subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who are registered with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, sir. First speaker is Mr. Smokey the Rapper. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm here to show you guys a video of what I do. What y'all want to sing something, they want to sing something, yeah. It was that smoke, it was that smoke. It was that smoke, it was that smoke. It was the smoke full when behold, boots for the new Smokey rapper showing their hype jump. They stopped rock roll when Smokey said go. Stop drop and roll, and I heard him flow. Stop drop and roll, you better serve him, yo. Stop drop and roll, the word is heard is pro. Now I'ma sprint through this tempo, five funky. Hey, what's up, y'all? I'm Smokey the Rapper, the rapping fireman. And I want y'all to stop what y'all doing so I can rap to y'all about something that's taking a lot of lives and destroying our homes. Fire. Every night when you turn on the TV, you see people on the news who's lost their homes and loved ones because of fire. You say, nah, it can't happen to me. My house ain't gonna burn. But I know, fire will knock at your door for sure, because I'm a brother man who knows behind the fact that it's happened to me. Not too long ago, my apartment building was on fire and it left 50 families homeless. And when it did, I wrote some songs just to let y'all know about what's happening with this. You're in a rage, you're on fire. Face the blade, ain't no time for foolish behavior. Stop, drop to the ground, don't let them out that pound. Roll around, shake off blade, raise your safe ground. Things get same hard, get the step into the skate. We can think that was based with drills chill. Head count, checkpoint, getaway plan real. Ain't nothing booty bout drilling through evacuation. Crack the sheet, time making you. What the truth, I'm self-revised. Don't forget it helps Smokey's old too. Lightning struck born to do what I do. Smokey help prevent 911 rescue. Flavor in my lyrics is just a test too. My rhyme good enough for you like eating vegetable, green crop. Stop, drop. So many fires get started by little kids. I'm gonna stop it here. I just wanted y'all to get an idea of what I do with fire prevention. Like I said last time I was here, I'm gonna get in touch with all of y'all. I just wanted to come and present a little bit of what I do so that y'all could get an idea. And I wanted it to be on the screen so the people of Greenville could see it as well. I thank y'all for y'all time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying that you're older, that you look like you're older. How old were you when you did this?
I was probably 30, I believe 33.
Thirty-three? How many years ago was that?
That was, that was a good while ago. To be honest with y'all, I never stopped writing. I never stopped practicing. So I got better and better with time. And then I just adapted to how things are today.
I got you.
I'm gonna show y'all that.
I got you.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Thanks for your hard work. All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Lenora. Ms. Lenora, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
The last time I was here, this really Ms. Daniels, you stated that this was not the venue for me, for my concerns about a gun permit to be heard. I want to remind you all that this is the venue where Midnight the Black Cat was advocated for for 30 plus two minutes, right here. So that I can better understand the venue for citizens' concern or human concern, allow me to state a few real-life citizen concerns. And you can give me a thumbs up if this is the venue for it, or a thumbs down if it's not, or no thumbs at all. I'm gonna keep pressing until I get the answers. I've taken 10 classes at Pitt Community College Business for Self-Employment. This year I took part one of, last year I took part one of a class. Part two was offered this year. I registered twice to be sure to get in that class. I was denied access to that class. And I'm sure Pitt Community College received federal funding. I went to Social Security. Is that a venue, is this the venue for that kind of issue or not? I went to Social Security to receive booklets. I called, inquired about these booklets that would give me some information on something I wanted to do. The booklets were available until they learned it was from me who wanted the books. I had to go to Martin County and get these books that are free to the public. One lady was outside. She had the books, but they wouldn't give the books to me. But I went to Martin County and got seven books that Pitt Community wouldn't give me. Pitt County would not release to me. By now, your city manager has shared with you a concern I had with Greenville Police Department. They sent nine police officers to issue an arrest warrant. When they arrived, my son was standing in the yard with his 14-month-old son in his arm. Nine police officers, they came out of everywhere except for the sky. And one was poised to pull his pistol based on a lie. And I thought this could end like a Breonna Taylor situation if he was in the house, but he was standing on the outside. Or it could have been easily an Emmett Till situation. But nine police officers? I thought that was a bit excessive. As long as I have citizens concerned, you'll hear from me. And I want to share why I feel briefly, why this is happening, where I can't get any services, I'm not allowed to take any class. After I left Organized Religion, a title was attached to my name, schizophrenia. I know who I am, and I know that's not who I am. If you're gonna add schizophrenia to me.
Next time.
Make it spiritual schizophrenia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you stopping by. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seen none. We'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
All right, yes, sir. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to appoint Bill Redding.
Second. All right. The motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Redding.
Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn.
I need to continue that one. Thank you.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. That is Mayor Protem Glover's board, so we will come back to that next month. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors' Authority for the county nomination. Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Smiley.
Move to recommend Jay Bastardo to the county.
Second. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Okay. Motion passes four zero.
Good luck, Jay.
Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. Again, this is a direct appointment. First, we have Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to continue that one, please.
Okay. Next, we have Mayor Connolly.
I would like to, I guess nominate, or I guess it's a direct appointment.
It's a direct appointment.
Pastor Philip Lyons.
Okay. He is appointed.
All right. Congratulations, Pastor Lyons.
Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor Connolly.
Continue.
And let's see. Finally is the Youth Council. That is Mayor Protem Glover's board, and we will come back to that next month. And that concludes the appointments. Mayor Connolly, for boards and commissions.
Did you say, did you do the animal control?
Oh, that was next. Yes, the Animal Control Appeal Board, and I will accept a nomination from anybody.
Send your information on it. I have some people who are willing, but they need to know exactly what the guidelines are.
I'll email you that while we're in the meeting. Okay. All right, and that concludes the appointment.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to only occur during the public hearings as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is an ordinance to annex the Arbor Hill South Phase 9 property involving 5.3067 acres located at the current terminus of Plymouth Drive. Chief Planner Shontae Gooby has the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located within Arbor Hill, so it's just to the north of LT Hardy Road. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map, and it's also located in the Hardy Creek watershed. It'll be located in voting district number four. It is 5.3 acres. It is anticipated to yield 20 single-family homes with the estimated tax value of $4.5 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Mr. President.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to item number five.
Item number five is an ordinance to annex the Craig Gohas property involving 1.10 acres located along the southern right-of-way of East 10th Street and 125 feet west of LT Hardy Road. Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the eastern quadrant or eastern section of the city. It's more specifically located south of East 10th Street, and west of LT Hardy Road. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It's located in the Hardy Creek watershed. It will be in voting district number four. It is 1.1 acre, no, I'm sorry. It's 0.96 acres. It's anticipated to yield about a 6,500 square foot commercial building, estimated tax value at $800,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Thank you for this information. Can you direct me to where we previously heard a rezoning request for some multifamily in this area? How close is this to where that request was? That was for Bill Clark Homes?
Yeah.
It was really near here?
It is. I can't give you a distance, but it would be to the, just south and maybe just a little bit to the west. So this is north of the railroad tracks. That rezoning was south of the railroad tracks. And I can maybe.
All right, that situates it. All right, that's good. That situates it, yeah. So this actually faces 10th Street, where is that previous?
That's right. It connects to LT Hardy Road.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Gooby? Seen none. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Mr. President.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is an ordinance to annex the Gray Fox Run property involving 1.6010 acres located along the southern right-of-way of Blue Bill Drive and adjacent to Gray Fox Run condominiums. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. It is located south of Charles Boulevard, again, along Blue Bill Drive. It is located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It is located in Hardy Creek watershed, and it is approximately, it will be located in voting district number four. It's just a little over one and a half acres. It's anticipated to yield 36 multifamily units with the estimated tax value of $7 million. And again, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
Could you go back to the other map?
This one, or?
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state, first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Should've said, please state your name for the record. I got a little ahead of myself. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Mr. President.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an ordinance to annex the Pinnacle Fire Tower self-storage property involving 7.773 acres located along between East Fire Tower Road and Bell's Fork Road and 250 feet west of South Bridge Drive. Again, Ms. Gooby?
I'm just carrying the remote with me.
You're the star tonight.
I completely just took off with it. This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. Again, it is located between Fire Tower Road and Bell's Fork Road. It's located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map. It's located in the Meeting House Branch watershed. It'll be located in voting district number four. It is just a little over seven and a half acres. It's anticipated to yield about 75,000 square feet of mini storage with an estimated tax value of $4 million. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seen none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex the Williamson Family Trust property involving 5.263 acres located along the northern right-of-way of Springfield Drive and 400 feet west of North Memorial Drive. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the northern section of the city. Again, it is along Springfield Drive. It's to the west of North Memorial. And it's adjacent to Ron Ears Motorsports. Just to give you a little bit better idea where it is. It's located in a preferred growth area on the tiered growth map. It's located in the Johnson Mill Run Parkers Creek watershed. It will be located in voting district number one, just a little over five acres. It's anticipated to yield approximately 45,000 square feet of commercial space with an anticipated tax value of $5 million. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seen none. Thank you. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right, seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Mr. President.
Second. All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? Oh, God, I had it myself there. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 11. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is an ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling at 3895 Olpak Tolus Road, known as Tax Parcel 14557. And our code enforcement supervisor Sylvia Brown will have that presentation. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This item on tonight concerning 3895 Olpak Tolus Road, this shows the Pitt County opus information for the property. Here, we're trying to show the dimensions of the lot, and the lot is just a little over half an acre. Here, we would like you to notice that the property is located just across the street from the entrance to Wildwood Park. Give you a little bit of idea of the location. The property's been vacant for many years. Utilities are not active at the property at this time, and the Pitt County tax value total is $18,000. There is currently $4,103.80 of unpaid taxes. Some of that is delinquent as well as current taxes due, and the estimated cost to repair the property, the housing unit, is $60,000, with an estimated cost of demolition being $12,000. And these are just a few pictures that the code enforcement officer took. This one is May the 23rd of this year.
Is that a tree grown inside the house?
Yes, sir. It appears so. This is the rear of the property. You can see extensive fire damage to the unit. And these are up-to-date photos, or photos of it more presently, taken on the, well, no, not quite. That's October the 10th. Here we are on November the 9th, the code enforcement Here we are on November the ninth, the code enforcement officer went out and took photos of the property as it is currently today, more recently. This property is air property, and all of the proper notifications were sent via certified as regular, as well as regular mailings and publication in the Daily Reflector as we are required to do. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance, require the demolition and removal of the dwelling unit at thirty-eight ninety-five Olpak Tolus Road, and we will be ready to begin the process of demolition after the ninety-day waiting period. Be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes ma'am.
Hey, thank you so much for this presentation. This is, this may be beyond our purview, but whenever I see air property, I know that there is a possibility for family land loss and family property loss. And with the cost to demolish at twelve thousand dollars and the outstanding taxes at four thou, I mean, the outstanding fees of four thousand dollars, I wonder, does this bill then go to the heirs for payment? Is the house or the property subject to foreclosure for these debts? What's, how does this kind of play out for the heirs?
My understanding is that it will be a lien on the property, and if I misspeak, I know staff will correct me, but my understanding is that it will be a lien on the property, the cost. Yes ma'am.
So this could be sort of, this could be a loss for the family, their family property, is that right?
Possibly, I mean, with the demolition, they still own the land itself, and it would be a lien, but if they go to sell the land, then that would be outstanding and would have to be paid prior to the finalization of the sale.
But it's not going to be a foreclosure on it?
No ma'am.
Without outstanding debt?
No ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Any other questions?
Mayor and Council, the city, once the city demolishes the property, the cost of the lien on the property, and the city vows that lien, and it could foreclose on that lien if it chose to do so, so it could foreclose, the city could do that.
So it is subject to foreclosure because of that?
Yes.
Staff would correct me if I misspoke.
It's teamwork.
Yes sir, yes sir.
All right, no other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion or emotion. Councilmember Daniels.
Not this property per se, but is there ever a time that the ninety days can be waived? And we may have asked before.
The ninety-day period is in our ordinance, is in the city's ordinance, and owner has thirty days to appeal the city's decision, so I think that's why the ninety-day period is built in, but the owner could appeal this decision for relief to the court, so you need to have at least thirty days, but our ordinance has ninety days in the ordinance.
Thank you.
May I have your approval?
Second. All right, motion's made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
We will move on to item number twelve, our final public hearing of the night.
Thank you Mayor, item number twelve is a public hearing for the home investment partnership grants received from the American Rescue Plan. I'll call forward Tiana Berryman for that presentation and introduction of our guest. Thank you.
Okay, good evening Mayor and Council. It has been about one year since staff began receiving guidance from HUD regarding the home ARP allocation that we are set to receive, and during that time, staff has worked to procure an experienced consultant, Civitas, to help support efforts with citizen engagement and drafting the application to HUD to access these funds known as the allocation plan. So tonight, Mr. Kyle Jenkins is here, consultant with Civitas, to provide an overview of funding eligibility, the results of our engagement process, and the proposed budget, so I will let him do the heavy lifting, and then I'll be available for any questions afterward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Tiana. Good evening Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to present the proposed budget and activities contained in the required allocation plan that staff is recommending to council for the home American Rescue Plan funding allocated by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The allocation plan quantifies the population being targeted by the program, describes the characteristics of the population being served, and also provides a GAPS analysis of the current services, shelter, and housing inventory within the city. These recommendations being presented tonight were developed in consultation with stakeholders that provide supportive services and housing throughout the city for the homeless, at risk of homeless, persons fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, youth, and other vulnerable populations. Before we present the proposed budget, let's start with a high-level overview of the home American Rescue Plan program. I will reference that as the home ARP program moving forward. The home ARP program provides an additional five billion in federal funds to assist individuals or households who are homeless, at risk of homeless, and other vulnerable populations with the goal of reducing homelessness and increasing housing stability across the nation. Six hundred and fifty-one state and local participating jurisdictions received or are receiving home ARP funding, the Greenville, the city of Greenville allocation is one million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars. The following populations will qualify for a project funded by home ARP funding. Individuals and families who are experiencing homelessness, individuals and families at risk of homelessness, families fleeing or individuals fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking, and other populations where assistance would prevent the family's homelessness or serve those with the greatest risk of housing instability. HUD kind of gave a little bit of flexibility there for them to divine that further in future notices. I also wanted to point out that veterans, while aren't a specific qualifying population, that veterans and their families that meet one of the criteria mentioned above will also qualify for home ARP projects. Next. The home ARP eligible activities are limited in scope. The qualifying populations are targeted. The activities that are eligible are affordable rental housing development, non-congregate shelter development, tenant-based rental assistance, or TBRA, and supportive service activities. Next please. For rental housing development, the eligible activities and costs can be acquisition of rental housing, construction of rental housing, rehabilitation of affordable rental housing, which can include conversion of non-residential buildings to residential housing. Eligible costs include development of hard and soft costs, relocation if necessary, and operating cost assistance or reserves. The home ARP non-congregate shelter development allows for acquisition of structures, new construction with or without land acquisition, and rehabilitation of existing structures such as motels and nursing homes. It's important to note that non-congregate shelter is defined as private units or rooms for temporary shelter that serve individuals and families that meet one or more of the qualifying populations on a temporary basis. They don't require occupants to sign a lease or an occupancy agreement. Eligible costs are acquisition, development, hard and soft costs, replacement reserves that are identified in a capital needs assessment that would be provided. Ongoing operating costs of non-congregate shelter cannot be paid by home ARP funding, so just wanted to make note of that for you. Next please. Tenant-based rental assistance allows for rental assistance, security deposit payments, utility payments, as long as it's part of ongoing rental assistance, and utility deposit payments. These are paid on behalf of a tenant directly to the third-party landlord. The TBRA in the home ARP program is a little different than the regular home program that the city receives in the fact that the jurisdiction can pay up to a hundred percent if they would like of rent and utility costs. Assistance is attached to qualifying households rather than the unit, so if the tenant does decide to move to additional unit and they notify the project sponsor or the jurisdiction, then they will be able to move that assistance to an additional, to another unit. Next please. And supportive services, lastly, are homeless supportive services, homeless prevention-type services, and housing counseling. Next please. The consultation that is required by HUD consisted of homeless service providers, domestic violence service providers, the continuum of care, and other types of programs that provide these types of services to the qualifying populations of the program within the city. We had three separate consultations with stakeholders. One, and the main one, was an online survey that was provided to stakeholders and opened for a period of time, I think it was approximately about a month and a half. And we had a virtual meeting with stakeholders, about thirty people were in attendance to that, where there was open discussion about what was qualified for the home ARP program and what the best uses would be. And then finally, there was, there's an eviction prevention committee that they discussed the home ARP plan as well, and potential uses. What you see in front of you are just some highlights from the stakeholder surveys. So ranking the unmet housing and service needs among qualifying populations, stakeholders rated rental unit availability as the highest service need within the city, so it's about fifty-five percent. And then you can see fairly close to about the same, all around ten percent, or maybe just a little above that, are homeless prevention supportive services, non-congregate shelter, tenant-based rental assistance, and McKenney-Vento supportive services. Next. Ranking eligible uses of home ARP funds in terms of priority within our community, the stakeholders, sixty percent of them said development of affordable rental housing. Next, the second ranked was acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter with supportive services a little under that. Next. When asked if the city would benefit from developing a non-congregate shelter, about seventy percent of the stakeholders said yes, very few said no, and a few were unsure. Next please. So with the consultation and the development of the home ARP allocation plan prescribed by HUD, this is the proposed budget that we have for these funds. Seven hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-two cents for acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, two hundred and fifty thousand for tenant-based rental assistance, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents for development of affordable rental housing, and then finally, administration and planning, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. I did want to point out that the administration and planning is maxed out at the statutory limit, and this is due to home ARP funds being able to be expended through September thirtieth of two thousand and thirty. So the administration and planning uses of the funds will be utilized to ensure the successful planning, implementation, and monitoring of the program, and ensure the city has the staffing to administer the program for the longevity. I just want to make note that even after HUD approves the city's allocation plan, the budget can be amended and funding can be repurposed for other eligible uses if needed. This proposed budget is a high-level plan for the uses of the home ARP funding, and the details of how these programs will be administered, or, and the details of who will administer these programs have not been determined at this time. These decisions will be made once HUD approves the home ARP allocation plan submitted by the city and the funding has been provided. And with that, I'll close the presentation and take any questions and comments, Tiana?
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Blackburn?
I do have a question. How does this relate, I know we approved a large project with, I think it was sixteen units for DV survivors, how is, how does this relate to that? Just totally separate, this is a different project?
It is a different project. We did use one million dollars of our standard, our annual allocation of home funds separate from this funding source. It just, it happens to be a project with consistent mission or purpose, if you will, and aligns with the intent of the home ARP funds, but it is not part of this program.
And are these, this is new money for our city, right?
That is correct. It's a one-time allocation.
And it's pretty exciting, I'm very excited to see this. So, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels?
I have a statement more than anything, I just want to thank staff for all the work that you've put into this. You guys have been very intentional about getting this out to the public and the surveys, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, any other comments or questions from the council?
All right, so staff recommends approval of the home ARP allocation plan and authorizing submission to HUD via substantial amendment to the two thousand and twenty-one annual action plan.
All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. All right, seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Are you sure Mr. Baldwin, you don't want to step up here? You've been patiently waiting this whole time. This is your last opportunity.
It's probably a pleasant challenge. I had something up here on the street closure, I was hanging out.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight.
I thought we were at the end of the public hearing. When's he, when is he going to come up here?
Listen, if you don't have an item on the agenda, there's a cover chart.
Monday night. Monday night, indeed. Bye.
And for formality, the public hearing is now closed.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. Any other discussion? Seeing none, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much, we'll now move on to other items of business, item number thirteen, Madam Manager.
Thank you Mayor, item thirteen is a resolution of the Historic Preservation Commission requesting the city council create a local landmark of the James L. Fleming House. City staff, Planning Director Tom Barnett, as well as Planner Tony Parker are available to answer any questions. This is an item that comes to council via the Historic Preservation Commission.
All right. Any questions for anybody, any of staff members?
Do we have to take any action in order to name this as a landmark?
Well, what would happen is the council would have, the city staff would have to work to have a survey done, historic survey done of the house, so if you are interested in that proceeding, because the city actually owns the property, if you will, we'll need the council to make a motion to move forward with a survey of that property.
So moved.
Second, I thought this was already a local landmark.
I do too.
Well, you just cemented it by seconding that motion.
Well, I remember when, we have done actions near this house, and we've been told, hey, you have to be careful what you're doing near this house because it's a local landmark. You know, we, when we moved the Jones Lee House next door to it, and I was like, yep, you gotta be careful, you can't do things next to local landmarks, and it's like, okay, well, let's be careful, and now it's like, oh, it's, it's not yet, so yes, let's make it a local landmark.
It may have been a local landmark in the eye of the beholder, you never know.
I certainly mark land by it.
I know this lady that probably had something to do with it, that loves historic properties.
It may have been on the historic register or something like that.
It's both, yeah.
And maybe somebody was thinking that.
All right, I got a motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, so that motion is just to allow staff to do a survey?
Initiate the process of making a local landmark, do the study.
It's just passing the resolution, right? Isn't that a resolution?
It's a resolution from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
So the council would need to initiate the action.
Okay.
So is that a separate motion?
No.
Nope.
That's what you made.
You've already, right.
You got it covered. Any other discussion? Seeing none, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Let's move on to item number fourteen. Mr. McGirt?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, again, this item is city's consent of assignment for TAF City Development Agreement and consent of replacement property assignment. This item involves a request that the city consent to an assignment by TAF Corporate Office LLC. It's for tax purposes, and TAF Corporation wants to change and assign the development agreement to some other entities for tax purposes. I think Mr. Taff Junior was here earlier, but the city has had outside counsel look at this matter, the city is protected, all the signees are held jointly and severally liable for the performance of the development agreements of the city's protection. I would recommend approval.
All right. Any questions, comments from the council?
That's approved.
Second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Well, that was a great, great ending. Let's move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no report.
All right, let's do comments from the mayor and the city council. Let's start on this end. Councilmember Bell?
Les, wrote, no comments.
Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, I'd just like to take a moment to talk about tomorrow being Veterans Day, November eleventh. It's a day of remembrance and thanks, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to go back and look at the original significance of November eleventh. That's in, it goes back to nineteen eighteen, the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, and that was when an armistice was declared between the Allies and Germany, and that was known as the Great War. I think people thought it was perhaps going to be the only war of its kind. Although the Treaty of Versailles was signed about a year later, armistice is considered to have been that day, that time, and that minute. It was, it's commemorated around the world today, it's known as Armistice Day, and in the aftermath of World War II, the Korean War, and other conflicts, it became known as Veterans Day. And red poppies are a symbol of veterans, you often see them around this time of year, and it really goes, it goes back to the poem by John McCray, "Flanders Field," and that's a beautiful poem if you don't know it. And Congress passed a resolution in twenty-sixth that said November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, should be commemorated with Thanksgiving and prayer, and exercises designed to perpetuate peace through goodwill and mutual understanding between nations. I would also like to take a moment to say that we'll all celebrate Thanksgiving on November twenty-fourth, and I hope that folks will consider celebrating, without turkey, celebrating the other bountiful fruits and nuts and vegetables and grains that we have. And last, I would like to wish Mayor Pro Tim Glover a very speedy recovery. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Daniels?
I also would like to give honor to our veterans for tomorrow and to remind the public that the location of our Veterans Day, well, not the cities, but the location of the Veterans Day ceremony has been changed from the Town Common due to the storm, and it will be held at the River Park North. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I wish our colleague, Mayor Pro Tim Glover, a safe and fast recovery. Hopefully she gets better. Unfortunately, she's not here. Hopefully, Les, Les is, I think, just out of town or something. Hopefully, he'll be back, he'll be back soon. Safe travels, Les.
You want to throw that bus in reverse real quick?
Safe travels to our colleague. Second, I also want to say happy Veterans Day to everyone tomorrow. If you get an opportunity, I think Councilmember Daniels just mentioned that it was moved from the Town Common to River Park North tomorrow at eleven o'clock. Hope that you can come out and participate. Hopefully that we will also remember veterans every day of the year, not just one day of the year. They're incredible heroes in our country, and we're thankful that they sacrificed so much to be able to protect our country. Finally, our Pirates play tomorrow night, play Cincinnati, a very, very big game for the Pirates, so make sure you tune into that game. I believe it's at eight o'clock, I think, tomorrow night. That's really big, because if the Pirates can beat Cincinnati, and if Tulane can beat UCF, and we win out, we could potentially play in the American Championship game this year, which would be awesome. So make sure you cheer on our Pirates, they're doing really well. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope you guys have a safe Thanksgiving and are able to celebrate with your family and friends. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Boom, six fifty-nine.